I'm gonna make all of them, because I have motion, motion girl here.
You go just knock yourself out in around an hour.
Yeah, I think.
I'm pretty sure these four are gonna agree on things anyway. I don't think we do anymore.
Oh, I kind of just thought a piece, but I think more.
So if you want to beat the dog a little longer.
Well, they're not here, none of the guys are here, so it's gonna be something just. I think we should just delay it for a couple of years.
Play it a strike.
We will call the in order. Start with a roll call.
Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Horn? Horn?
Here, sorry, I said, I did say here.
Oh, sorry, I missed it. Nelson?
Here.
And Jones?
Here.
Brendan, Amanda, and Hannah are absent with notice.
Okay, do we have any additions to the agenda or a motion to approve? I'll vote. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We have a motion to approve the minutes of, of the meeting of seven sixteen two thousand eighteen.
Yes. So move.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have motion to the media on seven seventeen two thousand eighteen. I'll vote. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Alright, who builds minimum pay for any? So, next section, we have time for public input on non-agendemic items. But I'd like to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, can't take action, but we've got a few minutes set aside for that. Alright, then next, moving on to ordinance resolutions, applications, and hearings, we have a block party application for South Main.
Brittany Lanzar, five oh five, South Main. We are just gonna do a block party on Saturday, August eighteenth, and I submit an application to Teresa for that. We're just asking if the road can be blocked off, starting at Nicholson, down to where I believe it's Tessa, right before it curves there. The only concern with it on that one is I understand that's kind of a main through road there, but we can kind of direct traffic around that Tessa way. The only reason we're asking for it to be blocked off is that road is sped through and the safety of our kids is what's very important about it. So that was the reason why we put in an application, just to have it be blocked off, starting at eight AM that morning, and then we plan to be done well before nine PM. As adults are all gonna attend the RMR's street dance that day, so.
Make motion to approve said block party for the date, August eighteenth, on the location designated.
Second. Discussion?
How does that work, Craig? Do you guys take the barricades down there, or how does that work?
We usually just take them off and lay them off the side there, let them put them up.
Put them up and take them down, so you guys will take them down before you?
Absolutely, that's not a problem.
Okay.
We'll just drop them off in one of the lots closer.
Yep.
Alright, more discussion. Lots. Alright, I'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Brendan Jones?
Yep.
Have fun.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, next stop, we have Sheriff's Department, these are reported, the hours.
Okay, uh, month, I suppose July up until now, we've had two hundred and eighteen calls for service. I think that kind of stays kind of above right around two hundred, two twenty, just right in there, seems to be. Seems like I'm staying two hundred and something a lot, I guess. We had thirty-one traffic stops, traffic complaints seem to be kind of dominating the Sheriff's Department right now.
Complaints as we call in with?
Not necessarily call-ins, just whenever, all the officers will get stopped and they'll do this, and I get stopped quite a bit, if you can watch this, stop sign, this stop sign, and this stop sign. Personally, I feel it's not as bad as what's reported.
Right.
You know, I could sit there all day and have two people drive through, but is that a, you know, is that a good use of resources to have? We sit on a stop sign for eight hours and see if we can get two people to roll through. Anyway, there's certain spots in town that are starting to get a lot of traffic, are a lot of complaints. For some reason, uh, and I've actually witnessed it on the golf course, but the gravel road going by the golf course, people think that that's fifty-five apparently. Never, when I'm on duty, but I did, you know, taking off, I see people drive that quite a bit, so I've been kind of hanging out on that road to see if I can slow people down. That gravel road, and then we get the complaint on Nicholson. Problem is, there's no real good place to sit on Nicholson to run radar, because there's no, you know, without somebody seeing you, you can't really, you know, hide anywhere, you're gonna be exposed. Which in itself gets people to see you there and slow down, so even if I gotta be out in the open, I'm okay with that, at least, you know. Main Street, another one, this stop sign for that one, and then people picking up speed or leaving the downtown area going north or coming to the downtown area. I've been parking there, trying to get people to remember to slow down. Fighter, always, that's twenty always too. But anyway, there were thirty-one traffic stops in Hartford during that time. I don't know if you guys think that's a lot, is that not enough, or I guess what's the feeling of the board as far as? Again, I'm trying to get information from you guys, information from you, as far as you think that, is it something where I can put out to the guys, pick it up, so, you know, you're doing a good job, or?
It seems like when school is going out especially, I wouldn't be surprised to see if we hired some of those, you know, high-traffic after-high-school kids moving around and all that.
Between mornings, I think between me and Jen, or me and Chance, whoever used to work, that's, that's good for, you know, two or three a morning.
Go for it.
Yeah, just to remind people to slow down, and then the school zones, obviously, people might pay attention to school zones. Seems to always be someone from out of town that's blazing through, that just doesn't pay attention, going to a doctor's appointment, or, you know. Other than that, two reckless driving reports, official, I mean, that were called in as reckless drivers that I was able to track down and, and at least advise them not to do it. Talking with some of my supervisors on being able to remedy that, I mean, if I don't witness it, I can't write the citation. If the witness is willing to fill out the complaint, or basically it's a citizen's arrest form, but they've gotta be able to identify the driver, is what I was told. So I think I told some people information, if you just give me the description of the vehicle, we can do a citizen's basic complaint, I'll write the ticket, we'll go to court. Talked to a sergeant of mine, and he says, we're really gonna need to know that they can identify who the driver is. So that's, that was his opinion. He retires in a month, maybe I'll ask another sergeant. Keep asking the question, eventually you'll find someone that will give you the right answer, right? Just the one you wanna hear. Yeah, the one I wanna hear. I can also ask the state's attorney's office and see what their preference is too.
I know someone who's actually done that.
Yeah.
In the town of Hartford, and within the last, like, three, four years, actually, within the last three years.
How'd it work out?
It's not hard. And turned him in, sent him an email and said, is this the individual? And I said, yes.
They write a bill to identify him through the face, or they all know.
Here's the license plate number, here's everything, and then here's the, is this individual, yes. And then they said, it's very unlikely you'll go to court, but, but due to the channels, more than likely, the channel will take them down the guilty road right now.
One I know that did go that route didn't work, and another way to do it is you actually fill out the case report, you send the case report over to the state's attorney, and they decide that they're gonna charge you out, and issue a warrant. One of the kids, a West Central kid, was reported as reckless driving, which he was, but, you know, at that point, you're looking at commercial driver's license, he was doing that, so he, you know, hired the attorney, he fought it in court, and he won, but again, he still had to... He's not gonna do it again, because he had to pay the money for the attorney.
I'm sure every situation.
Every lesson, you know, lessons are still learned then.
Of course, yeah.
You know, although he didn't get the actual fine, he did, there was punishment there.
Overall point should probably be just follow the, follow the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the best thing, so I think it was, it was like a passing on the right, it was speeding, and it was, you know, legitimate, but like I said, he had to spend the money to get out of it. Which was lesson learned anyway. Other than that, I guess I'd need a little bit more research on how the state's attorney wants to do that, and then so we can have, you know, the person that's complaining at least gives them ownership and some power that they can affect what's going on in the community, and then I'm willing to help them do it.
How is our, how is our lock of the bathrooms, have we, we cut down on the vandalism, or is it still?
Vandalism, I guess the bathrooms aren't getting vandalized, but no, like, the turtle got vandalized yesterday and last night.
Last night, they did?
Yeah.
The turtle down at Turtle Park, where the flowers are planted?
They knocked a bunch of bricks off, broke all the legs, the tail and head.
I've been checking the logs, and the officers are actually logging security checks at the parks, so they're, they are going out, and they're actually in the call log, so the officers have committed to doing that.
There's been several mornings, or not a month, but they might be on calls and stuff.
Right.
And they're not, I mean, since we took care of the issue a month ago, it's literally nothing until this morning, when the turtle got busted up.
We've had a few more burglaries that are happening in the community, not necessarily in Hartford, but in the community, I think we've dealt with that with our city shop, and we had one more car burglary, maybe a week ago. Somebody left their car unlocked, and that's, not, not, the wallet was taken, and, but there wasn't money in it. It's just the inconvenience of having to give your driver's license, having to go through that for them, but other than that, that's the first time I've heard of it since we dealt with it beginning of the year. I haven't talked to some of the officers, I was, I was gonna ask them what kind of juvenile traffic we're having, is there a lot of kids out at night, or, or what's exactly going on, but. Most of the stuff, most of the emails they'll send me if they're dealing with something, everything's been on traffic complaints.
Alright, thank you. Alright, have you got the engineer report?
Yeah, I'm actually doing my Ross handle at night, this is my first day back, I've been out on a two-week vacation, so.
Two weeks? Why didn't you tell me, gave you two weeks?
Yeah, I did, I had a couple of family reunions to go to, so. I'll let Ross kind of update us all later.
Should have the engineer's report, I never sent out. First item is the wastewater treatment facility. John has been talking with Teresa about getting all the preliminary stuff worked out, that is kind of done now at this point, and now we are gonna, or we're ready to start meeting with the property owners. So John and Teresa will kind of be coordinating those.
Do you have any bead on how soon, how will that happen?
How soon we're gonna be set to talk to these?
I didn't get, I didn't get a chance to talk to John or Teresa, have you been in contact with them?
Well, I'm anticipating the later part of this month, because the next two weeks, I'm really gonna concentrate on budgets, so I foresee me being busy until budget's done, so until after the twentieth, so I see it in the later part of the month, before we get our first one scheduled.
I guess I don't have anything else for the wastewater treatment facilities, are there any other questions about that? Vandemark Avenue, the contract documents have all been signed now, we're gonna issue a notice to proceed and start scheduling a pre-construction meeting, probably for the next week or two here, and hopefully the contract will be getting started right after that. We already did some shop runs from them, and are reviewing those now, so we'll be ready for that start date as soon as we have the three concepts. Any questions on Vandemark? Swanson Park Sports Complex grading project, if you've been out there, I mean, as the south portion of the site is now stripped, they have started to grade it. They have one scraper that's been kind of working for the last few weeks, just building up dirt to build up that first baseball field at the south end, and kind of gouging out for the detention pond at the south end too. They also did do a little work over at the South Street lot, they stripped a little bit of topsoil, and then on both sites, they installed some silt fence around the perimeter.
Do you have one question on Swanson, uh, there, right now, there, when I was out there, there was three rigs out there, a blade, scraper, and a bulldozer. Okay, that's pretty much gonna be what we can expect for the rest of the year, or I mean, does that fit the specs of the?
I think you'll see those three pieces of equipment primarily out there until they can free up their full crew.
Okay.
That's kind of the word I've been getting from the contractors, they're, they have a few guys working on it, but they haven't gone full war in the.
Yeah, okay, one other one.
Yeah, there's not much going on.
Yeah, and, you know, the deadline for that is October nineteenth, so there's quite a bit of time, and once they bring in more equipment, which I bet they're gonna bring in multiple scrapers, and probably have multiple bulldozers running with GPS. And then they'll move a lot of dirt really quickly, once, once that happens. I'd say the next few weeks is kind of what they've been telling me, they think they're gonna have some more crews freed up.
Contingent of another nature.
Yeah, of course.
Gotcha.
The last couple of days, they've just been pumping water up there, so. And along with Swanson Park, I have the first pay application, which you guys should have, for forty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. That application is mostly mobilization, the silt fence that I talked about, some of the clearing, some of the salvaged topsoil, and a portion of the unclassified excavation.
And the mobilization will include, as you said, two weeks from now, this is part of that, right? I mean, once a few scrapers get freed up, we're not gonna have any more mobilization, is that safe to say? Or the mobilization part of this forty-four, and that's it, and maybe more?
The, that forty, or the mobilization portion is seven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars, their full mobilization cost, their bid item for mobilization is twenty-nine thousand.
Okay.
And the DOT has a schedule for how we pay that out, so once five percent of the project is complete, then we pay out twenty-five percent of the mobilization cost. And I think once we get to, I need to remember the number, will we pay up the full?
I mean, there's a whole schedule to it, but as of right now, we paid twenty-five percent of the mold with this application, so there'll be another seventy-five percent that'll be coming as they progress.
Okay. I make motion to approve, uh, pay application number one to RMS for age and excavation for forty-five thousand, forty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty cents.
Second. Discussion? Questions? I'll vote. Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
And Nelson?
Yes.
I'm gonna move down to the Nicholson Road improvements. Hope you guys have been receiving those bulletins still, I sent one out two weeks ago, and then I think I sent one out this morning. So that kind of gives you a pretty good update on what's going on up there, and we'll run through that again a little bit. The utility crew completed the first segment of storm sewer, so all the way from kind of down to the bottom end by Nicholson Bridge, up to Shamrock, all of that storm sewer is now installed. In my report, I said a few inlet injection boxes, intersection of four sixty-four, the Nickelsens still need to be poured, those are now poured, they just need to have heat lids set on top of them. The utility crew also installed some of the grabies sewer, force made east of the creek crossing, so between the lift station and kind of where they're crossing the creek down at the bottom, all of that's done. And then there's just a few segments of utilities in between that they still need to finish. The grading crew worked on compacting that subgrade between Patrick and Shamrock, they placed the geotextile fabric and twelve inches of crushed concrete on top of that, and then the paid contractor came in behind them, put a curb cutter through, pretty much up to Shamrock. Right now, the utility crew is probably a couple of weeks behind schedule, the first deadline for the water and sewer, as well as getting the lift station up and running, is this Friday, and as of right now, it looks like the week of the, or on the twentieth of August, is the earliest that Sioux Valley can get in. I think the contractor kind of got sidetracked with that, didn't schedule Sioux Valley to get in soon enough. So that is gonna push them until at least the probably twenty-third, by the time they have power to the lift station and they're able to actually start it up. So I'd say that's enough time for them to finish the other pipe work, and, you know, missing this work that they have to do on those utilities as well. But it looks like they're gonna be probably a couple of weeks behind schedule. They did submit a request for an extension, just in the last couple of days here, and right now, we're in the process of reviewing that, and the reason they gave is because of the inclement weather and all the rain this year. So we're gonna be reviewing that, and then we'll respond to their requests.
Right now, we're planning on responding in a way that, weather typically is not something that they can justify. And then if we do review for weather, we always wait till the end of the project to make, let them make sure that we keep the pressure on them so they get the job done before we ever grant any sort of extension. So we'll probably be reviewing or responding in the fashion of that sort.
And I guess, um, the only other thing I want to add is that it does look like they're, you know, gonna be behind on that first deadline, but because they have all that storm sewer done, they'll probably be ahead of schedule for meeting that second deadline that we had this fall, for getting that road paved, I mean, in the next month or so, yeah. Having most of that concrete done, maybe being ready to pave the asphalt.
Nice.
So.
Good.
Good.
And then also included with this is the third pay application. To Sookup Construction for six hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. That application is primarily water sewer, some storm sewer, the base course geotextile fabric, and then the curb cutter.
Pardon?
Do you want?
I make motion now we approve pay request for Sookup Construction, number three, for six hundred and fifty-three thousand nine forty-five and ninety-seven cents.
Second. Discussion, questions? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes. Before we get off Nicholson, can we talk a little bit about our conversation today? I don't know, so I was under the impression, and maybe I missed something, that the plan, we were kind of phase one and two in this deal, and gonna pave to the fork, to the Colton Road corner. I talked with Ross this morning after I got his report, and now they're going to get all the curb and gutter and paved all the way down to the creek. So I was, I was under the impression we were gonna at least get to the corner this year and then pave the rest, but it looks like we're gonna get farther than what we had thought, so. And I also asked Ross, I said, so, when, I'm assuming at some point they're gonna start tearing up my yard. Sure enough, this afternoon, I look out my window and hears a, it's a road grader rubbing down my yard. I thought, man, I should call more often, you know, I could make stuff happen, but I was just curious when they were gonna start, you know, closing, getting in behind the, yeah, backfilling behind the curb gutter. And so they started doing that today, so.
Chasing up that, is it?
It is. The other comment I would make, Ross, and I didn't say this, tell you this this morning, man, over the weekend, there was a lot of people driving down that road, because I suppose there's just tons of people looking, that's wanting to see what's going on. I mean, I see cars going down there all the time, so, I mean, I get it, everybody wants to see what's going on.
Those bike strips flowing down there?
They have some, but anyway, that's, you know, and I get it, people just wanna see what's going on, it's a big project, they wanna see what's going on. I'd like to tell them, do like I do, just walk down there, but they don't wanna do that.
We're cautioned, it is a construction site.
It is, it is, so, but anyway, that's, I just wanted to share that, just so you know, so we're gonna get paved all the way to the creek, so.
Anything else on Nicholson? Mike Franken Trail, the contractor finished up the topsoil grading and reseeding, kind of in the ditch along Highway thirty-eight there, they did overseed some of the other areas that had been disturbed, or completely reseeded areas, where they put a new topsoil, where all the existing vegetation was covered. They also placed a strip of erosion control blanket in that ditch bottom, just to try and prevent all that erosion from happening again, so they don't have to come back and do it again. And then reseeded over that, so that should help stabilize that a little bit and get some grass to grow up there. We are gonna be continuing inspections as they finish the final few items on the punch list, and then making sure that all the seeded areas become established, yeah, this fall.
So was the same question you had last week, uh, where, I mean, since the punch list, if I'm reading that lessons correctly, is not done, are we, are we assessing many a little fine here at all, or where we at?
We're still keeping track of them, and ultimately, I mean, we'll present how many days there are to with the DOT, and then, you know, there's always some back and forth between the contractor and those, on those, they always fight them, I guess, so.
Sure.
But we'll present basically what we've recorded to them, and we'll sit down with them and hammer it out.
Okay.
It looks a little better.
Hey, I know it's the right way, I know it's right way.
On the bike trail, it does, it, it's coming, it's, it's better than it was.
Yeah.
But now I, I am, we walked down there last night after the big rain, and I couldn't see all the washout that we had before, so I think, I think they're maybe getting it. It washed, it washed all that out of the, I forgot to tell Craig yesterday, right off the asphalt parking lot, the school parking lot, between that and the bike trail, it took all the dirt out of there again. Oh, by the sign, Terry? By the sign? There were comes out of the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now let's look at that again.
Yeah. I forgot to tell Craig about it yesterday, I seen, so, comes out of the parking lot, the asphalt parking lot, right in that southeast corner. The ditch looks better though, I would say, the rest, yeah, I think the ditch looks better.
And that, that bottom of that ditch is always gonna be pretty flat and moving, you know, like, if you're gonna, it's gonna fill in with what it was again, and cattails, and that sort of stuff that was before. There's just nothing you can do to, to wrap that up, it's all flat.
Cattails are pretty.
And just let you know, uh, the bike trail committee is coordinating the ribbon cutting, I'm sure they'll still get the information out to you, but I think they've set the date for September fifteenth, Saturday, September fifteenth, at eleven o'clock, so. They just coordinated that over the last two days with Joan Franken and the family, so I'm sure they'll be sending out more information, but I'll give you heads up on that.
What time did you say, Teresa?
Eleven o'clock, I believe, you know, yeah.
Brandeis, the twenty-second.
Yeah, till fifteen, then the work, so do it the next Saturday.
Fifteen, so.
Pretty late.
You gotta pick it out, huh?
You gotta pick it out, eh?
Have to be, have to be a great, yeah.
Last item on my report is a force count. There hasn't been a whole lot of force count work in the last couple of weeks. We did do a little bit more with the main avenue drainage implements that Mitch kind of talked about. I still have been doing a few utility inspections in the western offices states, as they've been installing some of the storm sewer and sanitary, but there hasn't been a whole lot of action over there a little while. And then the MAPS landing plan review, we have had another subbill and are reviewing those plans.
So I have questions for Ross.
Bill?
For your board?
Thank you.
Do you have a public group submitted, Craig?
Slurry seal, I did visit with Sandal again tonight, they are looking at coming in the twentieth and twenty-first. They're going to start moving some of the rock in, start stockpiling down their shop, still be getting on that. Mag water, I, we've been working the gravel roads, they're not in bad shape again right now, still got a few potholes here and there, but talked to Jim from Gibson, and they'll probably shoot some more product back in latter part of August, so, or the roads we're talking about doing, so we'll get that done. Patching are pretty much wrapped up for patching, unless something else would have to show up in the meantime. We got most crosswalks done, you know, we didn't do anything on the second because they had, that's all getting redone, so that's why it never got touched. They actually are coming today, they're today. Grind a little bit off the top there, just get rid of paint to match up, so product will stick better. Sweeping, we don't get sweeping done, Justin already gave it yesterday and swept some more. Now, when they get done grinding, he's going to hit, the roads are going to get slurry sealed again right away, and then probably hit them one more time before they show up the day before, so we'll get that, or day, day before, so get that ready to go. Next thing is Jim Anderson down at the tree pile, he's been down there grinding and getting that up, I think he's already taken one load out of there. I wasn't up there at all this week here, so I don't know how much is left up there, I know at one time he had, but they've already cleaned up up there, so. I kind of think he'll be leaving this equipment there for a while until we get to most of our stuff cleaned up and done, so. Down to sewer, I guess water, I said there that we had some problems with that one back tee test on that north line going up there, that did pass though, so we've got two consecutive passes, so that can be put online. Lagoons, we are starting to drain down that first pond, we'll get that down low enough where we can get the marriage fixed, and we'll let that one get filled back up, and we'll start on B, so it usually takes about two to three weeks to get low enough to work on, so. Getting in there, we'll see what's a kid. We did have a lot of water come out and televise all of our clay pipe that we have in town, just to see what it's like, so we kind of know what we have to work with as far as munt, as far as when we should really consider doing that as a capital improvement for CIP. All of the clay pipe actually looked pretty good, you know, it's got its hairline cracks, and it's got some tree roots, stuff like that, but all in all, it wasn't in too bad a shade, so. I feel pretty comfortable letting, you know, letting it go a couple of years and checking, you know, and to televise it up again, so.
I'm sorry, which tree was that on?
That, all the clay pipes, which, we got some on munt, elm, a little chunk down here, right in front of city halls, clay yet, and then there's a little chunk up on the tally that is clay.
So you're speaking of all of them?
Yeah, all, all of them.
How about your instance, specific tree?
So they've, they do a report on it, they got pictures of it all, plus they got the DVD, so if you want to look at a boring film sometime, so you can.
I believe it, I believe it.
One's for here on the crack, are they coming? Better than Netflix.
So then, like I said, I'm actually just pretty happy with the way they look, so it doesn't look like we'll be, we won't be really worried about doing a major street project because of the sewer at this time in the year, so. DMRs, I can get them sent in, we did get the NASTI letter back, we had three violations with pneumonia, which we kind of knew we were going to have. We were okay on the daily for, for April. With pneumonia, but we did meet the thirty-day average, so we have a violation in April. May, we had some high violations per daily, and also a high one for thirty-day average. So sent the DMRs in, did the explanation on the bottom, and we got the letter back that we, kind of routine letter, threatened fines if we keep discharging on violations, and so we're already done now, and next time we discharge, we'll hopefully be back on track again, usually the fall discharge will be on violation, so we knew we were going to be on violation this spring, we're pretty sure we were going to be, so. So that's all done, we're, so far we're okay yet in the ponds, like I said, they're, right now, there's so much algae growth on them that, that there's no way we'll, probably until latter fall before we'll discharge, so unless we get too full, we'll have to contact them again and let it go, so. Parks, basically, I got, was working on getting some numbers in case we decide to do anything with the tennis courts, I don't know if he sent today over to you or not, too, so I haven't seen it yet, so. So we're still working on that. Bike trails, we've got the three benches, I believe they set the other one today, we did get them set though, and then we're going to do a little concrete work around them, just because people that got a mower around them, we're going to make it so they don't have to weed what they just mow without having to do extra work because they're in the yards. So we'll get them done yet, most now will try and get concrete that's leftovers from a project in town here, so we can just get it for free, just pour them up and have them ready to go. And then also with bike trail, we, and I think that's coming up later yet too, as far as the committee wanting to, for the help for that thing, yeah, so I'll just wait on that, but that table now, we've got everything there, we've got the prices again, just make sure things still pretty, close to what it was before. And we'll be starting to haul some dirt in, get that leveled off, I talked to this Georgian school, it's going to be right on the borderline between our property and your property, I think it's still going to be on the same property, but we'll be close, and they didn't see a problem with it, so we'll get that, get the dirt work done out there, and then we'll start building, building up if that's the way it goes tonight. Otherwise, library, we've got that done, except for the dirt work outside and getting the sign put up and railing, so. We got that ready to go, looked, looks pretty good in there for, for us, fastened what together, so.
And it was the first opening day, still clocked today, they opened, actually had people there, so.
The only last thing I got is conference, Water and Wastewater Annual Conference and Training is September eleventh through the fourteenth in Deadwood. I know I need hours, and Jesse will need some, and I might have me and him attended.
You just need a motion for, for, to attend, okay, I'm going to make a motion for, for Craig and Jesse to attend Stop, Cut, Water and Wastewater Association, Association's annual conference. I'm sorry, geez, that was a while ago.
You can drive the city car up there for that?
I need to take, take up. So they got a car, so.
Okay.
You can take the car, I don't care.
You asked my length of the car than you would have.
Craig's thinking you asked the wrong question, right?
I want, I want pickup, fucking country song.
We'll certainly take it off there, right, I'm betting in trust.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You could borrow Nelson's mini, eh?
Yeah.
So we'll work that detail out to go see if he, he or Jesse.
I suggest taking the car, that's all I'm saying.
Any other discussion or questions? Horn?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
That's all you got, and any questions, please, I guess.
First, I'll, we didn't make a motion, I'll make a motion to table the
Payloader?
Payloader, so next week.
Yeah, because we want everyone right here.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, motion second. Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
And then, I, we just, I was distracting Travis there, so earlier, so I apologize for the pettiness of this question, but what happened with the turtle in the park? I just came in on the last part of that, so.
Some kids overnight decided to bust loose a bunch of, lay out the bricks around it, on the head and the two feet and that stuff, and they left them all there, and they just knocked a bunch of them over and busted, you know, busted loose, so, because they were glued down, so.
It would have been nice to have taken one, and then we could just look for that next little landscape project. Hard to find them now.
All right, anything else? Thanks, Rick.
Okay, yeah.
With July month end, I've finished up all the month-end reports, and I gave you a highlight of some of the revenues that came in for the month of July. Also provided the cash general fund balance as of the end of June, and our year-to-date with revenue and expenses as of June also. The municipal league is offering a workshop for election, and I think it'd be a good refresher course for me to take to get back up to speed before, or if we have another election down the road here. They either do a one-day session out in Pier on September nineteenth, or they've got a webinar, which you'd have to watch six of them, and they start in December and end in March. So I would rather go to the all-in-one day session and get it all in one day, so would like to have council approval to do that. I would drive out and back in the same day, and I think the registration fee is twenty-five dollars.
Make a motion for Karen to attend the two thousand eighteen nineteen election workshop in Pier.
Okay, discussion?
Everything okay with that in the office and everything good there?
Yep.
Okay. Paul and David?
Hi.
What do you oppose?
The closing of the pool is tentatively set for August twentieth at five PM. Also, the Fall Pet Clinic will be September, or excuse me, August eleventh, up at the vet clinic, from nine to noon. And then I just provided the calendar of events for the month of July, and yeah, or, oh no, that must be August, August, I'm sorry, I didn't change my heading there, so. And that's all I have.
Couple, since it's a, the kiosk, is it fixed?
Yeah, she's got it up and going.
Good job.
Yep, she needs to get a hold of them, and we got, we got the new computer in, so we got this computer up and going, and she called the company and got it up and going, so. Yep, Marky's working again, she's getting the meetings on, so, we're running again.
Sounds good, thank you.
Are you turning back up the speed as a finance officer, and you're fixing her, her, her computers and her, wow.
Perfect.
Good, good, no. Teresa, did you post the golf field on the fifteenth as meetings, I think there's going to be more than four of us.
I didn't know who all's going.
Yeah, there's going to be more than four of us.
Yeah, there will be, yeah.
Nobody told me so.
Uh, there will be, um.
Fifteenth and the twenty-second.
And the twenty-second as well.
Because we're playing up at that.
Yeah, so it's the fifteenth and the chamber one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, or, uh, cha, the, Laquita, Makita ones.
Dell. Dell.
And that's, and that's the twenty-second one?
That's the twenty-second, yeah.
Okay, so I'll get those posted.
You probably should post those, because I know there's several of us.
Yeah.
Larry, you golf? Could you, what? We're a bit close to need a sub, we got stuck with Wagner instead, and it's like.
He's like, no thanks.
A lawyer that doesn't golf, that's not possible.
It's painting with a pretty broad brush.
All right.
All right, we'll be fine.
Teresa, is anything you'd like to add?
Okay, just want to bring you up to date, Ross alluded to a little bit, and we talked about it at our last meeting. We are working on a drainage issue that we have on North Hill with that new hole that's going in there. As you know, that's a low area, and it is all private property, but we've got about three properties in there that are drained in one spot, it's going to be an issue when the whole house gets completed, so been working with the engineers, and actually, Mitch, John, and myself met with Larry a week ago, kind of to discuss, you know, his responsibility, is it, you know, how should we approach this or whatever. Basically boils down to, it's private property, they've got to control their own drainage, but we're going to help facilitate it. As of right now, basically, our plan of action is, we're trying to, we got an engineer quote of what a, like, a drainage pipe would be, which seemed pretty dang high, so, we're getting another quote from just a contractor.
It was much less.
Which, did you get it? Okay, I asked this morning, we haven't got it yet, but yeah, so get a lesser quote, and then we will get the propertyors together and present that to them, and, and kind of see what we can work out and go from there, so.
What's that inlet actually, I had that in the boulevard?
The inlet is there.
Is it property and easement?
Yes, and we run property, the one that's there right now.
There's no easement for that to be in their property? No, there isn't, I believe there is an easement, there is, if I remember back to that project.
For that inlet, but we don't have any other easements, like, going along, you know, the property, the drainage, to go to the backyards is where, you know, it's cooling.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I was, I was spirited this thing until they took off.
Well, you have.
Oh, I got a picture.
Oh, yeah. So we're still working with that, and now that we got the code in, then we can kind of organize meeting with property owners and go from there, that. So let you know, we, we do have a new transit schedule, we shaved off some afternoon hours, we weren't getting any ridership, ridership, and all in the afternoon. But yet, we were paying a driver to be there and whatnot, so they're still doing the mornings, they're still doing the trips into Sioux Valley. We do have people that ride, you know, we wanted to make sure we weren't excluding anybody that is riding. We'll reevaluate it in another few months, every few months, we kind of look at it with the drivers, they, you know, they always keep a log of who rides when and whatnot, and kind of see if we need to adjust hours again, but as for now, you know, we won't have those afternoon hours, you know, they're shored up a little bit. And if you hear of any demand for it, or anybody wanting, you know, please let us know, so then we can coordinate that with ICAP. Just let you know, we did get reimbursement on the street damage that we had a year ago at the Jamboree Days. Went through the court system and whatnot, and we did get reimbursement for that in full from the courts, so we've got that now. I think maybe an update on the library already, like I said, today is the first day in there. This afternoon, about five people over there, so I think looking to check it out and have to go in late. Turned out, yeah, I think fairly good, for like he said, getting it together in a few short weeks, so turned out nice. We are, yeah, as Craig alluded to, getting a sign to put over, and then we'll do, be doing some more outside work, some, you know, landscaping and whatnot on it. Craig has been doing some traffic counts, I did put copies of that in your packet for you, so for your information, and I think you're going to, more, you're going to put amongst, see kind of what the Sturgis rally kind of.
I was just saying, Sturgis, we've got them up by the coffee cup, just see what the difference was from earlier this summer to over this week of the rally. See what kind of people's traffic.
You can share that with Jess, Jesse?
I sent them to him.
You get copies of all of them?
Good, okay.
So there is information in the packet for the upcoming municipal conference in October, there's an agenda and information, so if you look it over, and if you're interested in going, we do have a few rooms booked there, so let us know. Registration deadline, September fourteenth, so you need to know before then, so if you want to take a look at it, and let us know, then we can make sure we have, you know, enough rooms and provide it for everyone. I also put in your packet, kind of a little update on, we always have, we had our strict TV planning session, kind of let you know where we're sitting as far as what we budget for equipment, what we've purchased, what we still need to do, and a few other items as far as our action items of, you know, where we're sitting at, so. You know, we're halfway through the year, we've got, you know, a few things checked off our list of that, we do have a few more things that are in progress or that we need to complete yet for the end of the year. If you guys have any questions about that. We'll keep working on them, and we'll keep you updated as we go along, what's happening.
I like that, that's good, just keep checking on everything, understand where we're at, so.
Okay, and then, so the last thing I have already reported, I wanted to give you a little update on our yard waste site as far as figures, I, I was kind of curious to see if any of our changes improved anything or not, and as you can see in my report, you know, and I compared them with, not last year, the year before, since we were shut down for a while last year, so it was a real true comparison. So I just compared the May through July bills from two thousand and sixteen, and then this year, two thousand and eighteen, and as far as product and dumpsters, as you can see in the report, we're quite a bit less, you know, it was, just products was fifty-two-hundred versus eighteen-hundred, and even when we add in the extra expense of manning it, you know, the in the extra expense of manning it, you know, the monthly expense of the camera, the portable, we're still, it's $5,200 versus $2,900, so obviously that tells me we got a lot of outside dumping that isn't dumping now, so, so even with like I said, the expense, I think we're getting kind of a handle on it and controlling it a lot better, so.
You gotta talk Mr. Gates, but I have twice and then he takes that job very seriously of course. Somebody could have dumped some rocks and you made him pick them up and put them back in. It's all good.
Is the camera active?
Yep, all the time.
So last night we were on the far end of the bike trail and I seen a pickup pull it, we were probably ways away, but I seen a pickup pull up by the gate. He didn't just throw them over, he actually jumped over the fence and carried his branches over and put them in the pile, but does that show?
We can see that now.
I should just take it, okay, it was about, uh, 7:30. I was, I was too far away, we were way at the far end of the bike trail, in fact Deb noticed it, she said, "Wait a minute, what's that guy doing?" And I was, if he would have just dumped them over, I probably would have took off and headed down there.
You could see pretty good.
But, so, it was last night.
Okay, we'll check that out.
I was just curious, because she asked me, Deb said, she said, "Are there cameras?" And I said, "I think there are."
Yeah, and they're motion activated, so every time a vehicle goes by or anything, we get a recording of that, so we'll check out the cameras and see.
One of those cameras down there.
We do, we do, we get a lot of spots.
Or turtle. These kids don't like turtles, there's a whole development coming, they're gonna be.
So, that's all I got, does she have more questions?
Uh, no, no, have we received any calls from the local townships, like with complaints of grass clippings, you know, since you guys changed your dump site hours, we're getting all these grass clippings and bitches now.
Greg Box came in once and said there was, just once, and said on, I think it was North Bandamar, out by the page girls there and had one or two bags of...
But nothing says that?
But, and it wasn't just grass, it was, I think it was some garbage, so I mean it wasn't...
You're gonna have to send up the shooter's.
This year, he did complain last year about two, but...
Yeah, there was some other stuff up there, like somebody loaded some furniture and stuff.
Really need a lot of cameras.
A lot of cameras.
I got a couple of questions, Teresa, if I could. Memory serves me, like I've had a request for the city newsletter in apartments, a member was talking about that, why we don't do that, what is the reason again?
We mail them out with the water bills.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, apartments, if they're paid by the landlord, the water bill goes to landlord, so they... Now, we've talked with a couple of them to see, you know, once you get it, if you make copies and give them to your tenants, I think whispering kind of that, "I'm not sure about any of the..."
They don't overhear, so that's where I came from, and so...
It's always posted on our website, too, we post every newsletter on our website, so I mean they can go just on there to get that, so.
And you put some over the senior citizen center, in my understanding?
They usually come in, Melvin usually comes in.
Well, that's Melvin, okay, Melvin doesn't want that, you said it, I should have liked to have one, okay, never mind, but he didn't tell me that, okay, that's fine, go ahead and keep doing that so he gets it. I do have a couple of boring things to talk about, I hear you guys are gonna laugh at me, I know it. Is there something on the voicemail? I called last night after hours, tried to catch you thinking you might want, it's got the generic, generic, it's just welcome, it's not, "Thank you for calling City."
It's not doing the message and that?
Yeah, it's just a, "Please leave a message," it's all.
Checked down, didn't realize that we couldn't leave the message. We, if you remember about a couple of months ago, they switched around some of our lines and we had trouble at that time where it wouldn't let you leave a message at all?
Right.
And so we had to get a hold of Golden West and they corrected that, so it was, and we called in here to make sure it was doing our message, and so we thought everything was corrected, but...
And does it still have the option one, two? No, that's, that's gone, that's fine.
No, it all just goes to one, Melvin.
But it was, it was a very sterile, not...
Because our message would say two, you know, not openly leave a message, and we also have on there, you know, if it's an emergency.
No, none of that's there.
None of that came, which we should have, so, okay, we'll check it, so.
All right, another couple of things here, probably silly for asking this, but how labor intensive would it be to, on the, on our box here, to under, let me get it up here real quick, like city council information, to post or also add a sub file for code enforcement reports, billing, building inspection reports and building permits? Instead of emailing, yes, I could drop them in there and stuff like that, but would that be too...
I can do that, the reports though go to like the planning and zoning and we'll be missing a few people, but I can do both ways too, if that's easier for you guys.
I don't guess, I'm gonna put on that. I look at those quite a bit and I was having some issues with my computer, yeah, a little weekend and I thought, well, golly, it would be nice if I could just pull it up right there and then look at it and, but, I mean, what's your take on it? I mean, does it make a difference to you?
The, the box, the sync takes a while if it's the whole.
But...
But once it's downloaded, it's pretty quick, so. Whatever floats your boat.
Yeah, I mean, if you...
It doesn't make a big difference, like if it's a small spot, it doesn't take very long, so I can email them out and put them in the box.
It is kind of nice to be able to reference back by month.
Well, in this way, it's chronological, exactly what I'm saying.
I think, I think if you want it on there, it's not a big deal.
I would.
Okay, I can do that.
So that's for building inspection reports, code enforcement and building permits.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else for Teresa? I see you had something on your for adding Karen Wobert as a signature.
Yep, that'd be my next, yeah. I'd like to head her to the bank account, so we would need a motion for that, I'd take them a copy for a minute.
I'll move that we authorize to have Karen Wobert as a signer for city accounts.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What do you oppose?
Any other items other than city administrator report? Okay, so past old business, new business? First one is review request from West Central High School to use space on the North Water Tower.
Okay, well...
Yeah, you were waiting for a representative.
Yeah, I knew Brad Behrens was not gonna be here, he told me he wasn't, but I thought Chris Waltner, their IT guy, was gonna be here and possibly a gentleman with Speed Connect that was doing the installation. But if you read my report in the packet, basically the West Central School District would like to place a dish mainly on our North Water Tower to be able to communicate their computers between, you know, Humboldt, the Hartford Elementary and basically the high school, middle school a little bit better, they need, you know, a high location to get a good signal between all three of the schools. So they want to, they're requesting, and his letter is in the packet too, to place that equipment on our water tower, they would like to place that at, you know, no rent or no lease, basically, you know, I had Craig, they sent us, you know, what their equipment looked like and what the needs are, I had Craig go out and take a look at the water tower, he doesn't believe that the equipment's gonna cause any conflicts, you know, with what we have out there or, you know, our access availability, so, you know, we don't see a problem with it. You know, they'll be responsible for putting the equipment up, you know, cost of installing that and maintaining it and repairing it. The only thing I could think of possibly is, I'm sure there will be some, they need electrical, so I'm sure there'll be some kind of electrical bill, but how much they'll use, I was kind of hoping they would be here to see if that draws very much or not, I don't know if we would see a difference in our electrical bill for that tower or not, I guess.
If it involves Speed Connect, I think they were gonna meet it separately.
Typically what they do.
And they did not indicate that to me, but that could be, you know, we could approve it with them metering it separately.
Maybe close it down, but I got a call from Speed Connect, power and...
And, and that'd be great, then that, you know, they would then get the bill for that and...
We could tailor it.
They need to know.
Is there a timeline?
I think, I would say, I think they want to get it up and going, you know, the school's starting, so, so like I said, you could make a motion contingent that they, any costs associated with electrical would be their expense.
Go ahead, Travis.
Speed Connect, I was just, it may be coincidental, I'm gonna not make any motion on it.
What if we skip this? Mayor? Yes, Ross? Just a couple of foods for thought here, you have, you have some existing leases where you lease space to other telecommunications companies, I think you need to make sure that they don't conflict with them is the first thing. Second thing is, is we have leases for everybody else and I'm gonna ask you, if you just make a motion to approve it, why are you not having a lease? And what a lease does, it sets out the terms and conditions, but most importantly, it tells you how you get somebody off the lease, to get rid of them, this thing doesn't work out, now you have no reason to believe it's not gonna work out, but I think you ought to have a written lease. The third thing is, is I think you ought to have some insurance coverage, I think the city should be named as an additional insured, I'm sure that the thing isn't gonna fall off or falls off and hits somebody, there has to be some insurance coverage for you folks. And then the other thing that leases stand, standardly say are that if there's a need for your maintenance on your water tower, repair something, they'll protect their stuff and get it out of the way when you're painting, while you're repairing, so that's not your problem. The other thing, and I don't know the answer, I assume the answer is no, but is this generating a fee for the school? Their broadband capabilities being used by anybody in there, are they generating a fee? I do see in the CC, Teresa signed out from Mike Denny, there's Susan Goodwin, Goodwin Law at Verizon Net, and anybody know who Susan Goodwin is? I don't know if she represents the school or whatever, but I think, my short version is I think you can have a lease on some sort of...
I agree.
Let's give advice. I agree. And it, we've got a current, we've got current leases that we've, you know, we pulled back out, we take a look at it, we talk about what changes have been made in this one, we bring it back up to the city.
And I think, yes, I think I've hit the highlights that should, that should need their, his language and all of them, if I remember correctly, that you wouldn't materially interfere with somebody else's broadcast signal.
Right, and like I said, we're two cell phone companies up there, right?
So on the North Tower, there's, there's just one and that is Speed Connect, they're a universal one that's on there, so it's bank company, but it's the one where the general public can use and whatnot. Then on our Old Water Tower, we have, well, basically it's Verizon, it's who's on there, it was under a different name now, it's one of their subsidiaries, but that's who's on our Old Water Tower, so we are leasing two spaces to some.
So we need a motion to make a lease, to have a lease to occur on a constructor, right?
Yeah, I think so. Lease for review.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have, either one of you, whoever, whoever is, lease for West Central School to utilize said water tower for broadband use.
Wait a second.
Second. We need to specify that it's Speed Connect or...
I think they'll get it, right?
You don't need that, have that specified.
Oh, in the motion?
Yeah.
We need that.
We can add that.
Add it.
We'll do it to drop the lease agreement with Speed Connect, West Central Schools.
Right. Okay, other discussion. Your man, Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Next item up is trusty city personnel for erecting a picture shelf there for the light and red.
I'm gonna drive on this one, if you don't mind, a little bit, yes, because Craig, who you got some numbers for him?
The only one I got was the one for the building center.
Okay, so look at that and tell me, because he was dated from 2013, 18, and so, who else is here? The Bike Direct Committee, as you well know, received a $2,500 grant and these are the numbers that Craig roughly shot at me, like I said, on the sixth edition of 2018. Now, looking at that, Craig, what do you think?
Well, the materials went up by a hundred dollars.
Okay.
The tables already there, I think Joe and Frank donated that.
Right, yes, to my understanding, yeah, so the $1,600 is possibly a moot point, to my understanding, too.
And I think the labor's gonna be, I think that's what we kind of figured, we looked it over, me and Terry talked about it today and that's what came up, what's in order, so.
Okay, so basically, yeah, and last picture, same design, Craig? Stage three?
Yeah, yeah, same design, it's out of concrete, about 16 inches around the outside of posts so that we don't have to worry about re- whipping it or anything, so just easier mowing it.
Any question, concern about the location, gentlemen? Yeah, so bottom line, a few caveat at the bottom of my scribble sheet here, Bike Direct Committee will cover any remaining cost if the $2,500 grant does not. Judging by what Craig told me and stuff like that right now, we'll be right at that breaking point of right around $2,500 if we would donate our time, our employees' time to erect said structure. So on behalf of the Bike Direct Committee, I'd like to answer for that procedure.
You have the tables already there, you only have the $2,100 block split labor, right?
Yeah, you're right.
Make a motion. Two, four with building, shelf there for the light and steel chair. Second. And this is your motion, you're, you're basically saying, well, I see staffs do that with no re-division.
Correct, correct. Who needs a team staff doing such with no re-division?
Still the second. Discussion. Phil?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Form?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
We will get the stuff ordered tomorrow.
Thanks, Craig. And thank you for working with Troy so diligently, I appreciate that.
All right, next one up is chamber lease on billboard number five, West Face for Hometown Christmas. Lisa, I assume you might be talking about this, Teresa, you might too?
Yeah, so last year we approved a lease agreement with the Chamber, because the Hometown Christmas Committee is under the Chamber's realm. Basically, we approved to give them a one-year list in July of July, so the end of July it was, we're, made a motion to lease it to them at no cost and to waive the security deposit, so I contacted Lisa and Sherri to ask if they're interested in renewing it because it's a one-year term and they indicated that they would be, if the council will renew it for another year. We do have in the lease, and if you took a look at it and read it, but the last year's lease that we have said basically, you know, we'll rent it to them for this year term unless we get another paying tenant that would take it over, so that is also in the lease. Want to add anything to that?
I don't think so. If there's somebody else that wants or needs the billboard, I don't know that the committee would be interested in moving forward and I know the billboard practically needs to be updated and our committee is just now starting to form and we have yet to meet for the first time, so I can't really speak for everybody, but I have had a few conversations and I don't know that that's where we would probably put our funds towards is a separate billboard just for Hometown Christmas, so whether that's something else the city or the Chamber or another group wants to use for a better option or have it be something more community... or have it be something more community-wide, and it includes Hometown Christmas and Jamboree Days, or something. But I, I don't know that we, as a committee, feel a need to have a separate billboard for, for the event. And I don't know that we would, 'cause I know wraps are right around three thousand dollars, and that'd be a huge chunk out of our budget for putting the event on, and I guess unless the city wants to highlight that more as an event, I would leave that more to you guys to maybe address that, if that was something you felt was the best use for the billboard, we would certainly do what we could to help facilitate that design and, you know, work with that. But, again, I'm, I'm not sure that we would, we would pursue fighting rights to keep it.
I'm gonna give you a little history lesson here, I mean, first off, the marketing penny for Chamber, uh, paid for that, and put that up. Uh, I took a little look at it tonight before I came by, you're saying that it's a little, it looked pretty good yet, compared to the Jamboree one that was sitting there for ten-plus years. So, are you saying that it's deteriorated to the point where it needs to be replaced?
I think that was just the input that I had received, that if we wanted to continue with that, maybe we need to consider updating it. And so, if that were the case, I was gonna say that we probably, again, I would be speaking out of turn, without talking to the full committee on it, but, um, if you had talked to...
Updated, I think it's in decent shape, though. I think that the website's no longer there, if that's outdated. It's all like the information on it, that day. I think, you know, the day, 'cause it just has, you know, the first Sunday, and, you know, sometimes you can get those strips to go over, and, you know, and...
And I've run a lot cheaper cost. Look at it myself, because I really can't tell you what's on it.
Okay.
And, again, we, the committee wasn't the one that designed and did the billboard, 'cause it was the other committee that did that, so for me to speak real knowledgeable on that.
I'll try to email you, electronic copy that.
So, you know, so I would maybe ask the council to decide if that's something we want, you know, what, what, what does the city want to highlight on that board? And I don't think, as a organization, we'd be offended if it wasn't, if it was determined it was shared. You know, it wasn't just Hometown Christmas, or is there a way to promote the community as a whole better? I mean, it's one event throughout the year, I, I mean...
Now, if you, so, but basically, what I'm thinking on this is, if you're not, you know, if your committee's not interested in replacing the vinyl, which does sound like vinyl's too bad, just maybe means it's expired, and the lease is expired, and we just don't renew the lease, knowing that if some, if a paying customer wants to come in, or...
Well, and I think that's part of the lease anyway, if the, like, if somebody paying comes in, you give it up. So, if you guys wanna just leave it as it is, or renew it, and just with the understanding that...
Caveat, we do it. Craig, can we, is there a way we can easily fix the little stuff that's...
All right. It's a pain out there, isn't it?
At least it's not number six, yeah. If we can reach him with the bucket truck, if we can get in there, Greg, you know, right, some of that sleet ground, too, so it...
Yeah, yeah, well, and it's not dry here, so, that's, that helps, but, um, I was just curious, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, too. Obviously, we don't want to, you know, have misinformation.
And maybe it should be, instead of lease to the Hometown Christmas, maybe it should be lease to the Chamber, maybe the Chamber, is it fully under the Chamber?
It is leased through the Chamber.
You know, and maybe the, I, I mean...
Chamber, right, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're okay with going forward with it, but I guess, you know, if there was gonna be the request that we redid it, we would probably say, we probably weren't gonna pursue that anytime soon under our current budget scenarios. We have some other things for the event we want to spend money on, and I hope it be the billboards.
Make a motion to approve, I don't know, I actually haven't remembered that, uh, make a motion to approve a one-year lease as written from two thousand seventeen eighteen, carry it over to two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Second. Is this one up to date? Is this how long our term is?
Yeah, so this one is, yeah, one-year package is what it would be up to date. Um, the only thing with that is that, and you can do this on a separate motion, is that this does have the security deposit in it, but what we did last time was make a motion to waive the security deposit.
And I make a motion to waive the security deposit?
Yeah, we can't do that yet.
Okay, separate one, okay.
I'll show a mandatory motion, I guess.
But, go ahead, Borat.
Okay, discussion, Nelson? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to waive the security fee.
I'll second. Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Um, I'm gonna just interject for a second, if I may, um, uh, just because it's billboard related, and it's not really an agenda item, but I'm hoping for a little bit of discussion. Uh, one, number one, eastbound is now, till the end of September, that's, that's open. And why is two and three not having the vinyl on it?
So, I knew that question would come up, so I called, um, onto the forty-two, and I said, what's going on? Because, we've been billing, we've had a lot of...
We have a DOT issue with that, you know?
Yep, you know, we gave him that good deal on it. He thought within the next month he would have vinyls on those. He was giving this bill that, um, he was having a hard time getting quotes and from vendors or whatnot, but he's got something now going, and should be within the next month, is the last I've heard.
Okay. Any word from the DOT as far as that warning they shot across the bow? Okay, very good, very, so I have...
I guess the only thing I'd say on this last one is if we haven't already brought the Chamber, you know, Jesse, Sherry, anybody else in the loop, on what your thoughts are, if you meet the first time, um, please do. Let's just make sure we keep them up to date, that, hey, maybe we want to do something different with the billboard issue.
I, I discussed this with Jesse when this first came up, and then I CC'd Sherry on all the emails, too, so she'd know what was going on the loop, and she didn't have any issue with renewing it in the same terms and whatnot, too. So, we'll just have to contact her and the Chamber, talk about if they want, you know, what we can do for updates on the website or whatnot, or if they did the same, yeah.
If they get a proposal back to the city that says, hey, you want to highlight something else?
Yeah, if they want to do something different, yeah.
Get an idea, what idea is?
So, Jesse, have those discussions with the Chamber and see.
And Crystal Mulder, who's the one who did the design on that, and has the ability to, if he wants something covered, she would be your go-to person, so.
Okay. Next item up, um, appointment of interview committee for Recreation Director. Now, this actually fits under, um, under Teresa's ability to hire completely, if she wanted to. And, uh, it's just discussion, we're in a back-and-forth, there's its first time, new position, all of those kinds of things. It may not be a bad idea to have, have a couple of us around, just to kind of, you know, get that piece going, and, um, you know, that. So, we talked about having a small group of people interview, rather than the entire, the entire board, like we do for, for other full-time positions. So, with that, I've had some discussions, um, Travis Keel, Aaron Jones, been closest to this issue, you know, I work with, uh, with the sports complex and all of that, so I would like to appoint Travis Keel and Aaron Jones to the Interview Committee for Recreation Director.
Make a motion to appoint Travis Keel and Aaron Jones, and... Interview committee?
Interview committee.
Second. All right, I will just use this time to say, I have some reservations. We have three applicants.
Actually, we had one come in yesterday, three, four.
Four.
I think it came, either came in Friday or yesterday.
Exciting. My question is, my thought process is, we are a month away from having a budget for twenty nineteen, right? When will we finalize our twenty nineteen budget?
We'll finalize first, meaning September, yeah.
So, you know, it seems like we've kind of dragged this out, but would our applicant pool get a lot deeper if we could advertise with the... If, if the funds become available, tell this person, there's enough money in the budget, you can be full-time the remainder of twenty eighteen, and we budgeted for a full-time position in twenty nineteen. Would we open up our applicant pool, um, quite a bit more?
Do you think that's what's holding that?
A little bit, a little bit, I think so, another part of me thinks maybe the interest was down, because there's some reservation about being the first person to do that. So, just wanted to kick that out, um, now.
Do you envision them being able to be busy full-time? 'Cause our conversations with Matt King, that we didn't...
I know.
I don't know if we've had enough duties that can...
I do, I do, somehow, there's a part of me that thinks that that person could be, if full-time means thirty-two hours a week, I think that person could be busy full-time. But, just had to throw that out there, just a thought I had, as I was looking at the applicants of three, no, four. But, with that being said, it's up to four, that's, that's a twenty-five percent increase.
I, I guess I would, I would throw it there, 'cause I've been thinking about this, too, since Jeremy called me and asked me about this. I agree with Travis, but I was, I'm looking at it more from a walk before the run deal.
Sure.
I would like to see, I think we need to get started and see how this thing flows. And I feel we're gonna be pleasantly surprised, I agree with you there, but I think we need to walk before we run. I think we start out as, as we've advertised.
Sure, okay.
And I think if we have four applicants, I think we're probably gonna find somebody that will fit, fit our needs.
Yeah, I agree.
I think what you guys need to do is go with the flow. Don't have a plan, serious.
No, I understand where you're going with that.
Listen to this, get whatever is there on the front, and go with the best candidate, and whether that takes you to full-time next year or to the part-time right now, and go in that direction.
We're pretty close-minded, both of us.
Exactly. We're looking for a real...
Yeah, we're pretty, yeah, we're pretty close-minded.
Go with the flow. No, you're right, though.
You're gonna do this, and you're gonna do that.
But, I actually might get a lot of ideas from the candidates.
Exactly. Keep, keep an open mind, and you don't have to do that, so.
You're very wise.
You are pretty, very well known. Yeah, you're honest, I have, like, you gotta say that all in express.
All right, we got a motion, and a second.
Nelson?
Yes.
Form? Keel?
Yes.
Yes, I guess we got a, well, yes.
If we have speed, we're in trouble.
All right, perfect. I do know, Teresa, I wanted to quick mention, Jones has got a lot going on in the next couple weeks, weddings, everything. I'm not saying leave him out. Travis's schedule's probably a little more open.
I'm not. I hate to just cut you out of this, not that you're, we don't have anybody getting married in the next couple weeks, too.
When do you think?
October.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, when do you think you're gonna schedule this, do you know?
Well, like I said, the next couple weeks can be pretty bombarded with budget until you get past the twentieth, so I'm looking probably later part of this month again.
Okay, well, if you need somebody else that's open-minded, Scott's available.
Yeah.
Basically, that's, by timing, by timing, we need...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it would be nice to get a meeting together with us, where you can coordinate, you know, what we're looking for, and maybe get set, head up some questions, and get some dates and times that would work for us, that when I call a candidate for interviews, you know, I know when we can do it. So, maybe we can just kind of coordinate that by email, if you guys can give me your schedules or something, and... And that way, I can set up interviews and get them, you know, you know what dates work.
I can do that, I'll, my, my schedule's fully flexible, but, uh, I'm, I'm pretty open-minded, so I can probably do it by many a time.
Does, does during the day or evening work better, or, I mean...
Well, I'm like Travis, I don't do anything, so I could do my own.
He's always out walking.
Keep the family life happy, I'd say, here today, yeah.
I, I listen to all your worst schedules, or if you could do something, so, okay, all right. I'll, I'll email you, and we'll coordinate some dates and times.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you some dates.
Okay. Next item up, appointment of wastewater facility landowner committee. This, uh, the piece of this is to have discussions with those landowners, John, Teresa, you know, all of those folks, as we're starting to work toward, you know, getting everything lined up with that new wastewater treatment place. Wanted to talk with John a little bit, and maybe, you know, maybe if there's something I want to bring back, Mitch.
Yeah.
I have, my tendency is to believe that there will be certain council people that would be good for certain discussions with certain landowners, and other council people that would be good for discussions with other landowners. So, I'm hesitant to say I want this, this, and this person on that, because for certain landowners, I feel like it's gonna be different.
Yep, I hear what you're saying. I think if we want to talk to, we are trying to schedule a meeting for CIPO a bit for the next week. Try to coordinate with them, and schedule two, so I think you were gonna turn that, too, during the...
Right.
Here we can discuss that with them at that time.
Okay, so, I guess our question on that was, I know we got a ton of things going on the next couple weeks. This isn't urgent to have this group put together in the next two weeks.
My first impression is usually with landlords, I mean, John did a good job, between him and Teresa, I think, approached about anybody. But if there is someone that we, if somebody knows that they have a good relationship with someone, that always helps. Also good to know who doesn't have a good relationship with someone, so. Yeah, but, yeah, so we can make sure, discuss that with them.
Okay.
Four or five landowners between point A and point B?
Yeah, there might be a couple more than that, just depending on what option.
What angle we go.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on from that. Anything, we're just gonna take action on that right now. Correspondents, we have a thank you from the Chamber for business in the park, can pass that around? Let me see that, that was nice. Hopefully, this is still here, but, that's nice, so. Got that. And I believe we have Mr. Nelson and Mr. Nelson, we have an item for executive session under legal life leave.
Yes, what was it? I can't remember.
Anything on our personnel, like, can, right, so we can discuss it.
We can discuss it, so we'll remember where it is.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is called Ryan's guy.
Yeah, now the light goes off.
Okay.
Did you have our plate coffee?
Well, it was, it was a long, it was a long time ago, I made it last.
Teresa, I'd like you to put on, uh, the agenda for next meeting, no, we're gonna talk to you first, that's right, my bad.
I want to look at everything.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll get it out.
We got one track, Mike.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.